I'm going to call it to order, the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, town of Simsbury, today is Tuesday, August 25th. August 25th, yep, and it's about 7:01. So, uh, let's see if I can get my flag. Share screen. Boom, share, okay. And all that can, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Stop sharing. All right, so now I will do a roll call. Let's see, Holly Bem.
Here.
Nice to see you. David Bloom is, he indicated he would not be able to attend tonight. Aaron Levitt Smith.
I am here.
Hello, Aaron. Craig McCormack. Absent so far. Alan Needham. That's unusual. Absent. William Rice, I am here. Richard Cortez.
Here.
Hello, Rich.
Howdy.
Julie Eaton.
Here.
Hi, Julie. And Sean Glenn. Hi, Sean. Good to see you too. Okay. So, we have one, two, three regular members tonight, which opens up the opportunity for promotion of three alternates. And we have three alternates today. So, in absence of those other regular full-time members, I'm gonna ask that Rich, Julie, and Sean be promoted to full members tonight. Very good. Okay. Back to the agenda. Let's see. Where's my agenda? Next approval of the minutes of our Tuesday, July 28th regular meeting, that's in, of course, the year 2020. Okay, um, since Alan is not here, does anyone want to volunteer to lead the review of the minutes? I have no issue doing it myself. Okay. Then we will start. Um, any comments on rows 1 to 50?
No.
No, I had none either. Rows 51 to 100.
66, Katie Dykes', last name should be capitalized.
Okay.
On line 63, did we get Lawler's name spelled correctly?
Nope.
Thank you for confirming, I didn't want to assume.
The name Lawler is spelled incorrectly, should read capital L-A-W-L-E-R. Good catch, Julie. Anything else? Lines 51 to 100.
Line 87, um, land?
Okay. Line 87, land, should have a D at the end of the word.
Good catch.
I was on fire last week when the minutes came out.
Okay, moving on to lines 101 through 150.
115. It says Ms. Levitt Smith asked, and that it should be if.
If, okay. Line 115, the word it before Masako should be if. Anything else up to line 150? Moving on. Line 151 to 200.
Michael, on 191, it's 830G, but 830J is what requires the housing plan?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that that was the right letter. Okay.
Yep.
So, I'm on fire with spelling. 161, um, in the Cormac, um, add a C for Mac.
Okay, yep. Mac Cormac, yep. Lines 201 to 250.
I didn't have anything.
And the last few lines, 251 to 250, so okay, there's nothing there, but we thank Amanda for doing very good job. Okay, so I'm just gonna, for the record, note changes to row 63. Lawler is spelled incorrectly. Line 66, Dykes should have a capital D. 87, land needs a D added to the word. Line 115, the word if, or is, before Masako should be if. Line 161, Mr. Mac Cormac's name needs another C after the first A. And line 190, okay, 191, no issue. So. Okay. Looking for a commissioner to make a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
I second.
Seconded by Holly, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, so Sean is abstaining, so we have five, five yays, zero nays, and one abstention. Very good. All right. Great. Okay, that brings us to the next issue in the the agenda, which is a commission workshop. And if you remember, we decided to make it a workshop such that all commissioners could participate in the discussion whether they were seated or not. I guess it's kind of a moot point tonight, but I think it was a wise move anyway. So, yeah, the commission workshop tonight is the Affordable Housing Plan. So, a couple, a couple of things that come to my mind is, we can do a detailed, page-by-page review of the plan as as it stands right now, okay? Also want to give some thought to how we want to run the listening session on September 22nd, where we'll, we'll have the opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with us on the subject of affordable housing. So, maybe we can do that after we after we do the review. Okay, what is the commission's pleasure? How would you like to do this? Maybe, Mike, do you have the word document?
I do.
What do you think, Aaron?
I was thinking, can we share it? Because I think just going page by page, where we can talk about salient points. I thought you had some really good points, Bill.
Okay.
And, you know, so I think for me, that would work. I don't know what the other commissioners think.
Fine with me.
Yeah, I agree, Aaron. I didn't have anything really to add to Bill. I'm sure once we get to the final final proof, we'll have more, but I thought it was fine with what was already there.
Yep.
Nothing to add.
Okay, we can start with my marked-up document, I guess. Mike, I don't know if it's gonna be feasible to put them side by side, you know, the original Word document and my marked-up version. That's unmarked.
You know, Bill, though, I think yours, even with the markup, I think you can see, I mean, you can see enough of the original document, do you know what I mean? Because you wrote in pen on it.
Yep.
Right.
So, that, that copy would be fine, because that way we get to see what the original document, plus your handwritten notes.
Okay.
I agree with Aaron.
If there were other feedback, Mike, did you get other things in the Dropbox or in the OneNote?
No.
Okay.
Maybe you just said that.
Yeah.
All right, I will share the document right now.
Yep.
Oh, come on. Just bear with me. Is everyone can see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Bill, when you said, Michael, can you scroll to the top again?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry, it's all delayed.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm on, I'm on the top foot, looking at my other screen. Uh, yeah, hold on, let me try something.
I wonder if you open up the PDF, that would be better.
That's what I'm gonna try right now, is download the document and try to open it from there. I apologize.
Bill, I don't know if you're right, it said something about free text, I wasn't sure.
Full justification?
Yeah, but it, yeah, I wasn't sure what that meant.
Justification is a way of arranging the words on the page, so they go right out to the margins.
Gotcha.
It, you know, it's just an aesthetic thing.
Yep.
I think a lot of these documents are typically are fully justified.
Yep. Yeah, okay, that's right.
Fully justified.
Yep, fully.
The document is fully justified itself.
There are competing schools of thought that say left justification is easier to read.
Yeah. Yeah, it does, sometimes it does do some, some funny things.
Yeah. But it looks more official, but left justification is generally considered easier to read.
Okay. I agree with all your general comments.
Ensure margins are consistent on a given page and page to page, perform grammar and spell checks, and consistent usage of font, style, and size. Those are just, yeah, like I said, general comments.
Yep.
Things that I think, you know, it was a draft, Mike, it's not a criticism.
Yeah, and I apologize, I was, so I worked on this plan via Word and then Google Documents at the same time, so part of it, jumping back and forth with the two versions, some of my formatting is screwed up because of that.
Okay, yeah.
So, yeah, I apologize for that one, but I was trying to, unfortunately, this remote working with two different ways, this is a great example where you just have to do it one way.
At the end of the day, it'll be fine.
Yep.
All right, maybe you can scroll down a little bit more. Okay, so my next comment, I think you, there was a thought that you never completed.
Yes.
And I think there's a little more
Oh, yeah.
more meat to be included in that sentence.
I'll put the text to that, that Public Act in there, and it just explains, like you said, it kind of, I mean, it justifies, you know, we're required under Public Act 17170 to do this once every five years.
Okay. And just a couple of typos. All right, let's see if I can remember what I was doing.
Wait, go back for a second, actually.
Yeah.
Um, my name was spelt with a Y in there.
Oh, geez, I missed that. I put the hyphen, but I got the name wrong.
We'll change that.
Okay, so let's see here. All right, I found the, I know what you're trying to say in the first sentence, okay? We're trying to define what makes a home affordable, right? So, a home is considered to be affordable if it costs less than 30% of the income of a household earning 80% or less of the area meeting income. So, Mike, if that is text right from the right from the statute, I will not contest it.
Yeah, that's, that's right from 830J.
Okay.
Could we put Bill's side remark in as a clause? A form, a home is considered to be affordable, comma, according to Connecticut General Statute 830-G, comma, if it costs less, because as we've already seen in the Hartford Current, that is not understood that that's the definition, that they're defining that, whether or not people agree it's affordable. So, I think we should make this clear right up front, and a home is considered to be affordable according to Connecticut's General Statute 830-G, if, and then write the rest of it.
Yeah, I think, you know what, Holly?
A lot of us think affordable is a lot lower than that, and it appears that most people just see that word affordable and think and any further, and don't realize that that's defined by that statute, and
Maybe, maybe say that? A home is defined as affordable per, or, you know?
Okay, that's right, that's good, that's good. A home is defined as affordable. I like that quotations per, okay, Connecticut statute.
Blah, 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 if it costs, right, so I think you're saying it's defined as affordable per the statute. I agree, Holly, I think that's important, so.
Definitely, yeah, people need to know that this is an arcane law, an arcane definition.
I have a quick suggestion. Reverse sentence one and sentence two. I think you want to lead with what the statute is, what the statute is, and then say what's affordable, and then follow up with the
Okay. Good, good point.
Yep.
I'd still like to say, a home is considered affordable per this statute. You know, or the statute defines a home to be affordable, if blah, 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 just to emphasize that's, that's the basis of this whole thing.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I just put what I, you know, what I think people are saying in the chat window. Can it, so start with Connecticut General Statute 8-30G, and I believe that's called the Affordable Housing Act, or whatever it is.
Affordable Housing Appeals.
Appeal. Okay, defines a home as affordable, in quotes, if, I put is, but I meant if, and then the words that are there.
Hey, really small comment, is it a home or is it a house?
It doesn't need to be a house. It can be an apartment, it can be a townhouse, it can
So, it's a home.
Yeah, it actually, it could be a rental apartment as well.
Do you want to term, do you want to use the term residence instead of home, then?
Yeah, you see, I kind of, I kind of, you know.
An apartment, if you say residence?
Whatever I think the statute is, I'm just nitpicking on home versus house for like the whole houselessness, homelessness. Trying to be inclusionary on that.
I'm sorry, Holly, what did you, what did you say? I lost what you said.
Oh, um, the question was, should we use the word residence, and would an apartment be considered a residence?
Yes.
A house or a home is more, I think a residence is very broad, that's all.
Yep.
So, it's actually called the Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals. Let's see what it says, to defend their decisions to reject affordable housing. It says affordable housing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I think, what happened if we say, instead of a home, we say housing, or Connecticut General Statute 8-30G, the Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals Act defines housing as affordable.
Okay.
If if it costs less than 30%.
Yep.
Okay. Then the second sentence says, Connecticut General Statute 8-30G requires that 10% of the total house should be set aside as affordable. So, maybe would you just say the act?
This statute.
Yeah, or, yeah. Actually, okay, I'm looking at it right now. The Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals Procedure. So, yeah, I think we could say this, you know, instead of calling out Connecticut General Statute again, let's say this statute requires that 10% of the housing, of the total housing stock for a community to be set aside as affordable.
Since we already defined it, yes.
Yep.
Right. In order for the housing unit to count towards the community's official tally, the property must be subject to a deed restriction for at least 30 years. What did I put here? Add Simsbury's percentage with data date. Uh, so, Mike, later on, I think you talk about Simsbury's percentage, right?
Yeah, I do, I do. I had what, what the Department of Housing is reporting for our numbers, and that was 2019, which obviously is changing now that we're getting closer to have Climax Road on, on the, on the books.
Yep.
I like keeping it generic without putting Simsbury stuff in this, though.
Okay, good. Yeah, this is like an introductory paragraph, right?
Yep.
I have, I don't know if this is proper, or if it's just totally nitpicking or what, or if I'm just wrong. Um, quotations for affordable, I see making sense the first time, but then afterwards, since we've defined what affordable is gonna mean in this document, I don't know if it needs the quotation the second time around.
Agreed, yep.
Okay.
Or anywhere else in there, then.
We going by the Chicago Elements of Style, or the American Psychological Association?
I don't think it's affordable.
API.
Isn't it Strunk and White? That's what it was in college.
I like Strunk and White, too, yeah.
I Strunk and White.
Was that Elements of Style?
It was, Bill, we're dating ourselves, but yes.
I'm Marshall of Funk and Wagner.
Oh, I do remember that, too.
Okay. Income calculations are adjusted annually based on projections, maybe projections, provided by the I, I'm thinking it should be clarified whether it's the United States or the Connecticut Department of Housing and Urban Development.
It's, it's the United States.
The United States, I was gonna say, yeah.
So.
Because it's the point. Go ahead.
No, I'd ask that, but then we put US in there.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I really have no idea what type of feedback we're gonna get from people, and if we can try to anticipate some of the, some of the questions and answer them here, we're ahead of the game. Okay, moving on to the next paragraph, the town of Simsbury. So, it said would follow, would follow income levels projections, okay, so I kind of rewrote it to change the tense. The town of Simsbury follows income level projections for the Hartford, West Hartford metro area. My, my rationale is it's, it's an ongoing thing, it's, we are doing it, right? It's not something that may happen in the future, so it's just, you know, my preference.
I agree with your edits, Bill, would, could we say falls under the income level, follows, I think we fall under the income level projections of the West Hartford metro area?
That's fine by me.
Following implies that there's a lag of some sort.
Yep.
And just to build on that, I was thinking, do we even need that sentence? It's very, I think, in the next one, that we talk about it being part of the AMI above, and then we say, here's the below AMI for Hartford, West Hartford metro area.
Well, I think we need to tie Simsbury into that area, because if we don't do that in the second, maybe we can make it, we can make it one sentence, maybe, I don't know.
I'm all for one sentence. I don't know, maybe I just read it a little too elementary for me, but that's
You know what, I don't think you can overexplain this. We've, like you said, we've already seen it get totally misunderstood. So, I, I think it's really clear, it's good to be clear.
Have, okay, yeah, okay, so we've defined AMI above, that's
Do we follow those projections, or are we just part of the AMI for Hartford, West Hartford?
That's what I'm saying, do we fall under the income level projections?
It just says like, for Simsbury is included, the area in which Simsbury, town of Simsbury is included, is the Hartford, West Hartford metro area. Maybe you definitely got that.
That's good.
I have a change to that second sentence. I believe it should say the calculations below represent 80% and 60% of the AMI.
Good.
So, Mike, what are you, what are you doing on your end? Are you taking notes, or are you actually?
I'm taking, I'm taking notes right now.
Okay.
Because I can't, unfortunately, I don't have three computers, otherwise I'd be editing right now as we're going through this document. But, uh, it's easy, this is easy to capture everything, plus you're gonna use yours as the guide.
Yep. Okay, so, everyone, I think, understands that the table is a pictorial representation, or tabular representation, of the calculation within the statute. And so, my, my suggestion here, Mike, was to eliminate the, that one, two, third row. I think it's, you know, it, to me, it's pretty obvious that the column headings in the first row apply to whatever, you know, to the whole length of the column.
Yeah, and I apologize, I had it as two separate tables, and I combined the tables, so, yeah, you're right, that third one can go. Just part of the editing.
All right, and I just want to make sure everyone understands what we're talking about here, because we have to be sharp during this.
These, these are your income levels, now provided by HUD for each, each of that area meeting income, based on your housing, the house size.
Number of people.
Number of people living in the house.
Okay, so this is income. This is the maximum that a person or family could earn to qualify for either the 80% style of affordable house, or the 60%.
Provided that their housing, we'll get to the next page, their housing costs do not exceed 30% of their total income. So, maybe, Bill, you want me to jump to the next table?
Let me just absorb, okay, so this is a straightforward 80% Let me just absorb, okay, so this is a straightforward eighty percent of the AMI.
That's what the salary number is, or the, the income.
Thirty percent is applied to, right, Mike?
We'll get to the next page, and we'll, we'll show that.
Yeah, there's no thirty percent in this.
I'm just, I'm just showing just the straight math, saying, if you're making eighty percent, you know, how much do you need to make? What's the maximum for the household type, number of people living in the house? So that breaks all the way out to eight people. And that's, that is for, based on the data from HUD.
Yep. So that, that is income.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I put in here below from ctdata.org, this is the, the median income for Simsbury, just so it gets a picture of, you know, here's what the average income is for, for what's being, excuse me, reported by the state for a household in, in Simsbury.
The one thing about that, and they're like, it's like, we're talking all about generic, the, the regulation, and what those limits are. When I read the Simsbury in there, I immediately then had a next question. Well, what's the average household size? Doesn't matter, because we're already well above the eight.
Do you want me to get rid of that?
I think, yeah, I, I like knowing the number. I'm not convinced it's really, you know, has a lot of import, importance right here.
That's what I was gonna say, is it might be better in a different spot, but not right there.
All right, so I just put a note, remove it from page three, and if there's another spot that this, this is more appropriate, we'll move it to there.
Yeah, because, okay, Mike, let me ask you this. Maybe I'm missing the point that you were trying to get across. But what, what's the significance of including Simsbury's median income in this document?
It, it's just giving a picture of, so, so here's what, here's what the, the average income is for a household in Simsbury. And it's kind of, kind of relating to, so your average, your median is here, here's what all the other numbers play out. Because I think there's always a, a disconnect between, what is it real, like, what we said earlier, the whole education factor of, what does it mean when it's, to be affordable? And at this point, we're just, we're not even into housing costs yet, that's the next page. We're looking at salaries. So here's your salaries to qualify, without spending a dime on housing cost, to be considered within the eighty or sixtieth percentile.
Okay.
And I agree, maybe it, maybe it serves an appropriate location later in the document. But I can move that, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe park it someplace else for now.
Okay, I'll get over to the page.
Like, maybe, since we are falling under the Hartford, West Hartford metropolitan area, I like, we should put their median income, like, if we're following their percentages and their numbers, if we want it, like, it seems, like, just the Simsbury median income is, it seems kind of like, spacey out there right now, like, and I think a question was, like, is that one person in the household? Like, that's, that was my question, too, when I read it, is how many people are living in that income? And, yeah.
Yeah, I could try to justify that with a number. I'll, I can verify it from ctdata. What's their housing, what's their household type, size, that that number is based on? And then look from the hundred percent, eighty area median income for HUD, and see if that relates those two numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, well, what's your, good, Rich.
I was just gonna say, the, the Hartford, West Hartford metro, metropolitan area actually includes more than just those two towns. It's a, it's a whole collection of towns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's sort of what I'm hearing, is that you've got that piece of it. So I'm wondering if more education type stuff needs to be built into this to explain without blowing it up.
Would, Rich, would you want, like, a sentence, like, listing the communities that comprise the West Hartford, Hartford metro area?
I would say that's probably not a bad idea, because when people see that title, they're thinking Hartford and West Hartford, and that's it.
Yep.
And that's how we get all these numbers. And it's not, it's, it's a grouping of towns that are not at all homogeneous.
Rich, is there a map?
No, that's good news.
Yes, there is a map.
If there's just a graphical depiction of the map with the area highlighted, that might even help, too.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, a graphical visual person, either way is fine.
I could do either one. Whichever the commission prefers.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Sounds like we're putting a map, putting a picture.
Yeah, I like, I like a picture.
Okay. I will upload that to the document. Okay, and we'll move on to the next.
Okay, the income levels above would be used to determine whether a residence in Simsbury, okay, so.
Should be housing?
Yeah, whether housing in Simsbury, yep, so resident.
Consistent, we should use the same wording.
Yep.
Yep. So the income levels above would be used to determine whether a residence in Simsbury could qualify, I'm sorry, whether housing in Simsbury could qualify as affordable. If the monthly housing.
Take off the quotes.
Oh, yeah, take off the quotes. Qualifies affordable if the monthly housing plus utility costs did not exceed thirty percent of the person's income. Okay. The table below, the tables below illustrate what monthly housing cost would, would be for someone that makes eighty percent and sixty percent of AMI based on the household size. Perfect, so that dovetails in exactly with the ones above.
Correct.
Yep.
And now, now it starts to get tangible, right? Now we're talking monthly costs. Whether that's, whether that's a rent, or whether it's a mortgage, and, you know, PMI, and taxes, and everything.
The only thought is, do we need to talk about it being a residence in Simsbury? I mean, I know it's our affordable plan, so maybe it can. I, we're just being very generic, so up above.
Right, yeah, that's true.
And AMI, West Hartford, Hartford, right?
Yeah, but we, we are being generic, but we do want to talk about our town. So it would be whether housing in Simsbury could qualify. Because we're not, we're not talking about any other town.
I like Simsbury there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, Julie's right. It applies, these numbers apply to the Hartford, West Hartford metro area.
They do.
Yeah, I, I'm good with Simsbury.
I'm, too.
So I think that, I think that's, I think that's a, sorry, Julie, good, 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 good idea, but.
Also, I know you put makes, but should, should we say earns? For someone that earns?
Sure.
It just sounds a little.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep, yep, I do like that better, Erin.
For someone earning eighty and sixty.
For someone earning, yeah.
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 Actually, that's better, someone earning.
Yep. Man, those numbers scare me.
I know.
I'm so, I'm so out of touch.
Is it, that's what the housing number would be, or like, could be, because it's not gonna be exactly those numbers, right?
That's the maximum it could be.
Okay, okay, I guess, okay.
Which sort of illustrates all by itself why affordable housing in this time is hard to come by.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not affordable for a lot of people.
Which is, by the map, is gonna be real, yeah, I mean.
Right.
Right.
Which is why it's so nice we have all these other things, initiatives in this plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, just to get with the tense, and I know I harped on the word Simsbury, but instead of saying would be used to determine whether residents in Simsbury, should we just say the income levels above are used to determine?
Yeah.
Affordability in Simsbury?
Agreed.
Yeah.
I wish I had this team when I was writing papers in school.
Everyone's doing a great job.
Yeah, I like the collaboration. Makes it easier.
Believe me, I was, I was thinking of a way that we could all work on the document at the same time. Everyone could put their comments in. Couldn't we do that with Google Docs or something?
I think you can.
We could. Don't move off yet, Mike.
Okay, oh, sorry, sorry, Rich.
Second paragraph?
Yep.
The tables below illustrate, just kill the last S there.
Yep. Well, it actually, it'll be single, because I'll combine, so, yeah, those tables are gonna be one.
The table below.
Then you're fine.
Yeah.
Yep. Yes, it's, like I said, I, I set these up too different, that's, it's okay.
And kill the first S and table.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're trying to kill something.
Yeah. Give me, give me some love.
So, okay.
Okay, why is affordable housing important? Affordable housing, okay, that's good, we had the term affordable housing, perfect. Why, affordable housing helps diversify communities' housing stock. A diversified housing stock gives housing options to first-time homebuyers, or provides seniors the ability to age in place. Okay, according to the two thousand seventeen Plan of Conservation and Development, forty-eight percent of respondents felt there were too few affordable housing options for first-time homebuyers, and forty-four felt that there were too few affordable housing options for elderly persons. One of the goals of the plan was to maintain and enhance the safe, healthful, aesthetic, and distinctive living environment in Simsbury while providing for a range of housing choices for people of all ages and economic circumstances. That is true, that's, that's.
It reads very well.
Well, Glenn did a nice job with that one. Right, Mike?
You're right.
Okay, according, okay, what's my notes?
Oh, is this a side panel from the?
I think, I think the text was taken out of the P O C D.
Yeah, no, it was, I took a few texts and combined them from the P O C D.
Okay.
Why not? So we call that sharing, not stealing.
Borrowed.
Borrowed.
Hey, it's our document.
It's a tribute.
It is.
It's a good document.
Yeah.
So here, we got a couple bullet points. I'm just gonna read my comment. It says, I need to understand what's trying to be conveyed. Okay, according to the two thousand census, so I, I do have an issue with the two thousand census. That's twenty years ago. Now, maybe that's part of the point, okay? And, and you can convince me of that, Mike.
Oh, actually, that's, that's an error, it should have been the two thousand and ten.
Okay, not as bad.
That makes sense.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just, you know what's funny, just looking at that, yeah, I can change that.
Okay, so that brings.
It doesn't need to be in there.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah. And we're in the middle of the next census, so.
Yeah, but I think here, you know, Bill, when I read through this and I saw your comment, this is what I think confuses people, because we're talking about homes valued under one fifty, but according to the eight thirty G, it doesn't matter if it's not deed restricted. And that's where I think we get into some of this difficulty with getting people to understand what affordable is. We know there's housing stock that's affordable, right? Affordable in our minds, meaning people can afford to live in them because they're, they don't cost a lot. But according to this, that's not what affordable is. And so this might, in my mind, confuse the, the issue.
Well, but that's why we made it very clear that this was a definition specifically designed, defined as, by the statutes.
Right, but even having this in, Holly, in my opinion, why should we even muck up? But let's just stay focused on what affordable is. And this is thrown in, and people are gonna go, look, a hundred and fifty thousand, what do you mean? Do you know what I mean? It just, I don't know, I, I can just see people questioning it. So I don't know, I, I.
Erin, if we, if we eliminated that first bullet point, what about the second one?
Now, that I wouldn't have as much problem with, because I think that kind of talks to, look at what the average house is, and look what affordable, you know, so I, I, yeah, I, I don't have as much, it's, I think that first bullet, it, it, again, it confuses people as to what affordable. And, you know, Holly, we've had these discussions, because you've brought it up, how much housing stock there is under two hundred and seventy thousand, whatever, you know, and I, I just think it confuses.
I like to have this in there, because we, people need to understand that there's a different meaning for affordable, because up there, we say only four percent of our stock is affordable, but here, we're saying that six percent, it, it truly is affordable.
It's not, though. That's what I'm saying. If this is not affordable, because that sixteen percent of those a hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses, it's not affordable, because it's not deed restricted. And that's where I think.
All right. Erin, what I'm trying to say is, there's a distinction between what an arcane definition due to a statute, in what everybody else in the world calls affordable. I think it's good to, to bring this up, that, that, you know, and I think you're right, we probably have to explain why we said that, but this really is from the Conservation of Planet Development, and this is really our position, is that we, we care about this, and that there's a different, you know, I mean, somehow we should mention that we feel strongly that we have to go beyond eight thirty G, and that's what all of the rest of the suggestions are, because we need to provide housing that most people consider affordable, not just what the statute says is affordable.
I don't agree with that first bullet. I'm just going on record, I think it confuses it. I think we really need to focus on what eight thirty G is, and how we can do that. And I think you're, in my opinion, I think you're blurring that, and it gets confusing. And this is what I think Alan brought up at the last meeting, is there's gonna be people with all these questions, because I've had people already call me about this, and I know very clear about the statute, eight thirty G, what that means, and that's what this plan is about, you know, really having to abide by that. And, and I think eight thirty J makes that clear. To me, this blurs that, just for me, I'm just saying. And I'm thinking in terms of the message we want to get out to the public, I think this confuses it, and we'll be spinning our wheels, backtracking, trying to explain. That, that's just my opinion. So, but if the rest of the commissioners feel fine with it, then I'll, I'll go with the, with the majority.
Well, Erin, I don't, I'd like, think it leaves out a lot, also, like, it's, it has a couple of, like, reasons as to why affordable housing is important, but it, like, it leaves out the huge issue of, like, race and the history of affordable housing in our country, and what that has meant for diversity and communities. And so I think it, like, just, just barely touches the surface, and then leaves a whole lot of questions, as you're saying. And I agree, I don't know if it's totally applicable to.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. Um, I, I don't think, I don't think C J S eight dash thirty G has any words, you know, about anything that you just mentioned. It, it's strictly financial.
Well, then, why are we talking about, like, old people aging in place, and first-time homebuyers, but not, you know, like, it just, it's like oddly specific?
I see what you mean.
But also, like, not inclusive in being oddly specific.
Well, no, that's, you do have a good point.
Yep. I, I think.
I don't think they meant to be, not inclusionary, I just think this were the, the examples that came up when people were giving us input. I mean, there, there is a lot of concern about our, our elderly here, who, who care all, all their life, and now are afraid they can't afford to live here.
So in the P O.
Yeah, and they're totally valid.
In the P O C D, do we have anything about inclusiveness?
So eighty-eight and eighty-nine have some fun stuff in there.
That's a good point.
I don't think we did put something in there about that.
I don't, I don't object to putting some, some words in here, you know, being inclusive, however you want to state it.
Yeah.
But we can't, I don't think we can tie it back to the P O C D, because I don't believe it's in there right now. Does it, no, doesn't mean we can't put it in this affordable housing plan.
So you know what, Bill? So, you know what, Bill? Um, on, on page twelve, and it actually, the P O C D has affordable housing, and it says, you know, at the time, four point five percent of housing units met the definition of affordable housing. And in parentheses, we put assisted housing financed by Connecticut Housing Finance Authority mortgages or sale prices restricted by deed. We actually put that, and so I'm wondering, should that be? Should that be in here? Somehow, I'm not saying right in this thing, but it's spelt, we actually spelled that out in the P O C D.
You know what's funny, Erin? Like, now that you're mentioning that on slide twelve, we started this page with, why is it important? Right? Why is affordable housing important? And we were very, I, to Sean's point, probably very light on why it's important. And we're very skinny on like, two points as to why it's important, and then we start going into what our stock is. Maybe we do have the opportunity to blow it out and get a lot of input from the town and the public on why is it important to them and the town members?
Yeah, that's, that's a great point.
Yeah, really good.
I think you'll hear diversity, like Sean mentioned.
Yeah, but I think that's great to really understand why it's important to multiple people. And then another section can talk about this stock and what we have, and how affordability is quantified in different ways.
Yeah.
For people as well as the statute, perhaps.
Yes. So I personally, going back to this point, that first bullet, I think you get away from being that prescriptive and talk about what we have and be specific, assisted housing financed. And that way, you're not getting into an amount of a home that we have stock with, cause it, that's not, this is what affordable is. So, yeah, I like that idea, Julie. What, why is it important and try to, um, weave that in?
Okay, so in the first paragraph in this box, I think, you know, like Julie said, it starts off by, why is it important, right? So I think if I understand correctly, the consensus is that we want to expand, um, on the first paragraph. And maybe that expansion will be a product of the input that we get in our, uh, listening session. At least a portion of it.
Uh huh.
Can, can somebody tell me what diversifying a community's housing stock means?
More than one type of house.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
I think in this context, Rich, we're talking about value.
It could be size, shape, right? How many dwellings, you know, multifamily, single family, in my opinion, when I read it. But to your point, Rich, it could be open to interpretation, right?
Yeah, if you don't mind it being interpreted in different ways by everybody reading it, that's fine. But I'm not sure that we don't need to come up with something a little more definitive.
How would you define it? I mean, to me, diversified, I mean. Different options.
That's why I was asking for your thoughts, cause I, I wouldn't know.
Well, how would you interpret that? I agree with Bill. It's like different, I mean, diversified stock is different types of housing. I mean, I, I didn't, that's interesting. Yeah.
To me, it would mean having, having apartments, having three families, two families, um, having condos, um, all the different types of housing that they make out there, but is that really reali- realistic for our community? And do we not wanna narrow that down a little bit or refer to it in a different way?
Or, or leave it vague for now.
Right.
Yeah, I, you can.
I.
Just a thought.
I mean, we already have condos and, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if I'd wanna be more prescriptive. Cause this way.
I agree, I agree.
What was that?
I agree with what you're saying, but we don't need to be more prescriptive, I, I.
Or, or, or to Bill's comment, if you wanted to keep it open so that it, that it not, or vague, you could just say a diversified housing stock provides, uh, multiple housing options and not get into the different classes that you're trying, you're catering, whether it's, and just leave it at that. And then, as, as Bill said, during your listening session, that's where this, that sentence could be expanded to a different, a, a whole set of, of options or goals.
Or, you know, you can do, I mean, and I, I don't use this word, cause it's using again, but to Sean's point, you can take out for first-time home buyers and seniors, but gives housing options to a diverse.
Population.
Population, but you don't wanna use diversity twice.
Well, and, and I think that might have been my problem when I was reading it first, because when I see affordable housing and I see diversify, I don't think of housing stock, I think of people.
Yeah. I, that's how I thought of it, too.
That people who are not white need affordable housing, which is also a really bad assumption to be making.
That's true, that's a bad thing.
Well, not just a race issue, but like, different abilities and different, like, physical understandings and different, like, yeah, so I, it's, uh, diversify is quite a strong word, though, that like, brings a whole lot of heat with it, I think. I don't know. It's like, put, yeah, maybe it is a better, better placed, uh, in a more open way. I like the way it was last mentioned, like, um.
To a diverse population.
Options, yeah, to a diverse population. I like that better than the diverse housing stock.
Also talk a lot, I mean.
Or diverse population needs, you could, but, yeah.
But we even talked about the needs of the business owners, right? Like, I think we talked about worker-supported housing. I'm saying that all wrong. Um, but like, where people live versus work. You don't want people to have to commute. You want them to work and live in their same community. So it helps attract businesses. Like, we could go on and on and on about different types of affordable, why affordable housing is important. But I think we could get that from the listening as well.
Do you, you know, going to your points, then, do we actually need that first paragraph? Cause if you start with the second paragraph, why is it important? Well, according to the P O C D, felt that, you know, you, you get into some of what the public is saying. Forty-eight percent of respondents felt there were too few affordable housing options for first-time buyers and seniors. I mean, these are just, right? One of the goals of the plan was to maintain enhanced for, for people of all ages and economic circumstances. I mean, you could put eight, you could put for, for, yeah, I, you might not even say for, for all people, you know what I mean?
And then you can build upon it and say, what else? And then you get a lot of.
Or a range of housing choices for a diverse population. Right, or, or, uh, provide a, a range of housing choices for a diverse population. And then you can get, I don't know, I don't know what people think, but then you can get rid of that whole first thing.
Maybe the paragraph alone right now would be sufficient.
What was that, Holly?
Um, maybe the paragraph that you highlighted, according and ending in circumstances, would be sufficient.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you have to have that first paragraph, actually.
Yeah, and, and, and that paragraph, just that one paragraph might be enough.
Yeah. For now, and then, I, I, to Julie's point, we could add to it after hearing feedback.
I think that's good. I, I'm also just, for all practical purposes, everyone, we're only on page, like, what, three or four? Turn nine o'clock.
Yeah, so, I don't know, what do people think by just having that second paragraph for now and take out everything else, and then enhance it after the listening session?
Yeah, I, I'm good with that.
Okay.
That works.
Yep.
Okay, here's the law. Affordable Housing Appeals Act. The Affordable Housing Appeals Act or Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G provided an avenue for additional affordable housing in Connecticut. The intent of the law was that every community in Connecticut would provide no less than ten percent of total housing stock as affordable housing. Deed restrictions are utilized, so the homes it, it said price would be protecting the affordability for a period of thirty years, and I just kinda reworded it to say that, uh, so that the home's affordability would be protected for thirty years.
Yeah.
Uh, guys, can I ask a, a question? Does affordable housing require deed restriction? Because, uh, as we just pointed out in the, uh, P O C D, we also said it's either, um, uh, financed by the Connecticut Housing Authority or sale price restricted by deed. And here we seem to be implying that deed restriction is the only requirement.
So, so there's other, there's other, is a point system going towards your ten percent? And the chart below outlines it, such as government assistance, tenant rental assistance, uh, Connecticut, uh, how, uh, finance authority, housing finance authority, loans, deed restrictions are another way. But the, the deed restrictions receive the highest points. The others, it's, it's a point system, um, that, that's going towards your ten percent, and so they all get, they're weighted differently. But when you're, like I said, when you're going to your ten percent, that's how we get to our, our healthy four point four seven percent, which is probably gonna go down, uh, this year, coming up.
So, um, but, uh, uh, what if all of them were, what if we could, um, do a, a, run an education program so that everyone learned how to get a, uh, C H A loan to buy all that stock that currently exists?
The C F H A loan's gonna, gonna trigger income requirements. It's, it does, you could, yeah, I mean, and the same thing, the United States Department of Agriculture o- offers certain, uh, finance options based on if it's a rural, considered a rural area, um, for first-time home buyers. That's another one that provides, it's, it's considered affordable housing, um. But it, it really, it get back, it gets back to, uh, incomes. Incomes drive the boat on it.
Yeah.
And is that a problem?
No, it's not a problem. I'm just saying that it, it's, it's, I just, the thing I would stress is that it's very specific on income, it's very, you know, it's loans. I think it's, it's, it's a whole, a very large issue to tackle, to, to kinda educate.
Well, I mean, not in this one document. I meant, like, when we were talking about things that we could do, uh, as a town, uh, it, it appears that we have a large amount of stock that meets the requirements, except it doesn't have one of those little tick marks above it. And, um, you know, deed restrictions are, as, as we see, zero, or they're hard to come by, and they're not really necessarily that good for the poor person who buys them. Uh, but if they could get loans, well, I mean, everybody who has a house that is in that price range could bet it's a win-win. We can sell our stock and we can bring in people who, who need affordable, uh, housing.
So, Mike, uh, Mike and commissioners, I'm thinking in the first paragraph that we might not even need that last sentence. You know, we, we talk about the intent of the laws, that every community in Connecticut would provide no less than ten percent of total housing stock as affordable, as affordable housing. Then go on, according to the Connecticut Department of Housing, twenty nineteen Affordable Housing Appeals List, Simsbury has four point seven four of the total housing stock considered to be affordable to those individuals uh, who make less than the area median income. Below, okay, uh, I don't even think we need to talk about the income again. We just say four point seven four of the total housing stock considered to be affordable. Cause we, we've, we've already discussed affordable up in the, the earlier pages. Now, below breaks down how the percentage was determined by D O H. So now it's obvious to people that, you know, some type of government-assisted or rent, tenant rental-assisted, C H F A, U S D A, deed restrictions, all somehow work into the formula to be total assisted units, and then there's another calculation that turns it into a percent.
Okay. And, and I agree with what you said, Bill, but then could we remove the two sentences that already in this, in this document that imply that deed restriction is the primary, uh, requirement? Because we actually say up in one of the paragraphs we just approved, uh, in order for the housing unit to count towards the community official tally, the property must be subject to a deed restriction. Well, that must be subject to, um, a, a number of, of, of government-assisted, um, possibilities as outlined in this table.
Mike, does eight dash thirty G only deal with deed-restricted properties?
Or approvals, yes. If it's a development that's approved pursuant to eight thirty G, it has to be a deed restriction. For a point system going toward, uh, counting, uh, housing units towards your ten percent, other numbers are brought in. But if it's, if you're using, cause remember, it's, as you said earlier, Bill, that the title of the statute is the Affordable Housing Appeals uh, Act. So therefore, it's, it's specific to applications that are made, um, that are considered appeals to housing regulations in a community for the intent of adding affordable housing units. So deed restriction is the primary, uh, mode to get those new units considered affordable.
Yeah, what a shame.
I, I think you need a paragraph somewhere. I think you just need a paragraph somewhere, giving the definitions of if it's a, a, a development, it needs to be this, and deed restriction is the, is the trigger.
That's a good idea.
And if it's not, then these other things also qualify as affordable housing within the community. And just, you know, name them, I don't know, list them, whatever, however you wanna do it.
Okay.
And then you can show this graph showing what we have in town. We do have some deed-restricted properties in town already, though.
Would you do that in what is affordable, Rich, or would you do it here where the stock is?
I would do the definitions up in what's affordable so that you can just talk about what you wanna talk about right here.
No, the, 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 you know, I'm looking at a synopsis of the statute. And affordable housing development, which the law defines to include assisted housing and set-aside developments. So we've really been talking about the set-aside developments.
Right. That's why I think the definitions are really important. Get everybody on the same page before they start looking at, at, at town numbers. So that they can understand why some things are counted and some things are not. When I qualified for a C H F A loan, I wouldn't take it because the rates were too darn high. And the other requirements were too onerous way back then. Um, you know, I can understand why we've only got, I'm surprised we have that many in this town. Just because of how expensive they are. It's usually cheaper to go with, um, with a straight mortgage than, than go with a government program. You always pay more that way.
Why?
Because there's more risk, so the rate's gonna be higher, period.
Right, you might not qualify for a conventional loan.
That's right.
Right, so if you don't qualify for a conventional in any way, and you have to go with a government loan, you end up paying more interest-wise on a monthly basis.
Yeah, but that stabs a lot of people.
All right, um, did we come to a conclusion here, or are we at an impasse?
I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not a clear what people wanted to put here or elsewhere, so I don't know if someone can summarize. Did we take out that deed restriction in the first paragraph?
We were gonna take that out in favor of putting some definitions further back.
Further back where?
Up in affordable housing means.
So in the beginning, where we talked about what it is and all the tables, maybe you close that out with, in addition to that, here's the point system, the deed restriction. close that out with, in addition to that, here's the point system, the deed restriction, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah. Somewhere around page four.
Okay, that makes sense to me. But you would keep that, um, the grid where it is? That has what our housing, affordable housing stock is?
Yeah, sure. Cause somebody can just refer back to the definitions if they need, if they don't understand.
Yep, I think that makes sense. Cause that would go with, that's explaining what affordable is. Yep, okay.
Um, the interesting thing about this paragraph is that it is a very good segue into the next page. Because it says, in the case of Simsbury family would require a gross income of 78,000. And then if we skip over that second, that last paragraph, and we go into goals for diversifying, one of the goals is it is important to consider family households with incomes less than 70,000, which I think all of us feel very strongly about. So I think when I was reading that, to me, it was written to emphasize, okay, this is the law, but we want to do more than the law. We want to do more for our town affordability than the law says. And if you read Bill's remarks here on the temporary for, for your moratorium, I agree. If we just take that out, it's a perfect segue into the next page. And I, I don't think, and I agree with Bill's comments, that, that gets in the way, that, that it, it looks like we're trying to get out of something and not.
What I would say though, too, is I think Bill, Bill is right.
I'm sorry, Erin, let me just, um, I want to make sure we understand what's going on here. Holly, are you speaking for the town?
I, I don't know if I'm speaking for the town. I'm speaking for the, the, the flow of this document. I was just saying that, that paragraph, it seemed to me it was written to, to say, okay, so this is the law. This is, that's the law. You need at least 78,000 to play in this game. And then the next paragraph as part of our goals is it's important to consider our household families with incomes that make less than 70,000.
No, let me be a little more clear. Are you speaking on behalf of the town when you said that it's clear we want to do more than 10%?
I, I didn't say it's clear that we want to do more than 10%. I thought I was paraphrasing what I've heard all of our, my fellow commissioners say that we want to go beyond eight 30 G. We want to make affordable, affordable housing. We want to have housing that people who don't make $70,000 a year can afford to live in.
Okay, so may, maybe, uh, you can frame that by, you know, the, a majority of the commissioners. I don't remember taking a vote.
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, we're, we're kind of jumping ahead. Why don't we kind of finish this page and then go tackle the next page?
So, so the 78,000 is a maximum income for a family of four. 1953 is the maximum monthly cost. They can get something smaller and pay less.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no one builds for that, do they?
What?
No one's building for less than that.
Well, yeah, but what this law, this document has to reflect what the law is, not what the town wants to do ethereally separately from this.
Okay.
This has to follow the law.
I was under, I was under the impression that this is the end of discussing the law part. And then we're going to get into all of our, all of the rest of the considerations where we go above and beyond the law. Inclusionary zoning and, and all these other things that we've, we've got lots of things to talk about.
So my, my, my proposal was to, to take out the paragraph below the table. Um, I, I think that's adequately described earlier on in the document. And, and Rich, I think, you know, I think I, I was very much in, in tune with your comment. And I think it can be expanded to say a family of four who has a household income of $78,000 can, can probably qualify for a mortgage for a home that costs 150,000. Outside of any of this affordability stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Because what we're saying now, and then we've done the calculation, is that $78,000, 30% of that equates to a sale price of like 205,000 or 270,000. There's nothing stopping someone from going and buying a, a low priced house.
Yeah.
And, and I think, Holly, that, that's kind of, what you're, what you've been trying to tell us is that there are houses for sale that are, that are attractively priced.
There aren't enough. I mean, I, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't realize I was only speaking for myself. I thought a number of the commissioners felt that we don't have enough affordable housing.
Well, we don't by the state statute, we don't hit the 10%.
Well, I mean, real affordable, affordable, not, not arcanely affordable.
We can't mix the two topics.
I know. I asked.
This is what's getting us in trouble.
Exactly.
Well, I think what's getting us in trouble is people thinking that, that the state statute really addresses affordable housing.
Well, this is intended to teach them that it doesn't.
Correct.
I, I.
And we can't do anything with the law, Holly. I agree with you.
No, no, that's okay. All right, then I, I, if, if.
No, but Holly, you, your, your point is well taken. And, and I think everyone agrees that, but I, I, and I agree with Rich. And that's why I made my comment early, very early on about taking out that paragraph around affordable or whatever, because I think it's confusing. And I think, um, and Bill, to your point, I hadn't thought about it in those terms, but you're right. Somebody doesn't need to go through this, right? To be, right. It's, I mean, but that shows you the craziness of this statute as it pertains to Simsbury housing. But I, to, to Rich's point, I, I think they're two very separate. And that's why I, I tried in the beginning to, to say that as well. I, I think it gets us into trouble. So Bill, I agree with you. I think that paragraph, we've already stated it. I think more, uh, less is more. And I think the temporary moratorium, I think it should be out, because I, I think it makes it look like, I, I just agree with your comments. I think those should be taken out.
Yeah. I think Bill nailed it. It looks like we're just trying to, um, we're just trying to get around something. And, and I thought we were trying to do more.
Yeah. And I, I, I don't know who, 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 who steers the ship on this. You know, ultimately, this document will be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So we really, we really need to get their input, too. Uh, you know, if, if they, if they have been discussing amongst themselves, you know, diversifying housing stock and then offering, or, or making available lower price, uh, uh, options independent of eight dash 30 G, well, we should probably know that. Or if, or if they have, you know, if they've, have a policy where they want to have 25% affordable housing, uh, then we should probably know that.
Yeah.
So Mike, this listening session, uh, you know, what, what's on the next page here? Cause I'm, I'm thinking that we're getting, we're getting kind of towards the end of my attention span.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're getting into the goals now. And so your listening session, what did we say? We said September?
Twenty second, I think.
Twenty second. So we, we have, we have a meeting on the eighth of September.
Yep.
So we'd have one meeting before the listening session. We have, we have, I guess, Bill, I mean, it's up to you or the commission, how you want to proceed. We could pause and complete the review of the document on the eighth, and I will incorporate all of the commission's comments into the first six pages.
Yep.
Um, do you want to tackle just maybe one more page?
Uh, I actually, in the time remaining, I would like to talk about, um, the format of the listening session.
Okay.
How many more pages is it? I don't remember. How many?
There's 11 in total.
Oh, 11, okay.
So we have five pages. Which, you know, you're getting into discussing the, the goals and really in the next, next set of pages.
I didn't know, it, it, I, I just heard from Bill for the first time that we hadn't really agreed on goals.
Will we be able to get, will we have to get it done?
Or we'll have to have another session or something.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe, Bill, if you want to, you want to have that conversation first about the format of the listening session? And then the other suggestion is, you know, we do a review, we pick up where we left off on the eighth. Uh, I will do the, the editing to the document up until page six. Anything new, such as adding the definitions to the document, I will share with the commission prior to the next, the, the meeting on the eighth. And then as we tackle the next four or five pages on the, on the eighth, if we feel we need another, we need another night, you know, we can have, schedule a special meeting if the commission's okay with that, to kind of tackle whatever remaining stuff we have prior to the listening session.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, then, um, before we make that decision, let me ask, uh, you know, did anyone have any, any, um, ideas about how to, um, run the, the, the listening session? And I know ordinarily it'd be pretty, it'd be pretty straightforward, you know? We could either do it in the main meeting room at town hall, we could go to the library, we'd go to Eno. Uh, but now with the, uh, the social distancing aspect of everything, uh, are we talking about a Zoom meeting open to anyone who wants to come?
Bill, the only option we have is a Zoom meeting. We cannot have in-person meetings because the governor still has a cap on indoor events at 25 people.
Yeah.
So if we were to schedule an in-person meeting, um, as soon as person number 26 walks through the door, the meeting has to be suspended. Um, and from guidance from, from council, he is saying that until that number changes and the governor lifts his current executive orders, we can only do this via Zoom.
Okay. So which format?
Which other commissions have had public hearings via Zoom?
Yeah.
This may draw a large crowd. It, it, it's, we can manage it still, but it'll be just, um, a lot of coordination, um, of just managing people, making sure that one person's speaking at a time, et cetera, which we can discuss. That's, that's nitty gritty, really down to the minute details on that.
Okay.
Um, I know that, I, I know that commissioners talked about at the last meeting about this listening session. Do, would you want staff to prepare some sort of presentation, even if it's, if it's, you know, a, a five-minute PowerPoint showing kind of where we are with, with the plan to kind of prompt the, the speakers?
Yeah, I mean, we have to explain to them what eight 30 G is.
And if we can get the materials out in advance, I think that would be very important for people to be able to look at that and ruminate on what eight 30 G really means.
Mike, is September 22nd cast in stone?
No, it is not.
Oh, there you go.
It's your date. So, so let's just say that.
We haven't, we haven't publicized anything yet, right?
The only thing we did was we, we, uh, shared it with the.
Eric Wellman.
With Eric Wellman. But we did also tell him that we are finalizing that.
Yeah.
That, that it's not written in stone yet.
Okay.
So if you want to push it off to October, we can.
Yeah, I want to make sure that, that we're all on the same page, Holly. I didn't mean to pull the rug out from under you or anything, but, um.
No, you get a point. You got a good point. We need, we need to really have a, a come to Jesus meeting about our goals.
Yeah. And, and I think before we even finalize that, we need to get input from, from the Board of Selectmen. It, it, see if they have any, anything, uh, you know, that, that they, that we should be using to guide our process.
Bill, do you, do you want, do you want to also seek input from the zoning commission? Cause, cause a lot of this is going to be tasks that are going to be assigned to the zoning commission or suggestions to them.
Yep, yep, yep.
It just keeps your thought.
I actually had a zoning person contact me. Um, and they were very appreciative of this listening session. So I do believe, and, um, I do believe that they would be part of that.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that, that they'd be part of that same September 22nd meeting, Mike, and not, not separate.
Yeah.
But maybe, maybe we should do it separate. You have any idea, Mike, what the Board of Selectmen's, um, you know, position is on the subject of affordable housing? Are, are they, are they looking to our commission to make suggestions? Or do you think they have some guiding principles that they want us to incorporate?
I, I don't know the flavor of that room right now. Um, we've, we've, I have not presented the, the only, the only comment I've made is that this commission is ta, is ta, has taken on the affordable housing plan, which is required under statute.
Okay.
Um, other than like saying like, you know, these are the goals that we were tossing, tossing around. Is that kind of consistent with what you feel that is a decision for the community? We haven't had that conversation. Um, maybe, you know, a suggestion would be, is that similar to, um, you know, similar to a referral process on other matters, whether it be from the zoning commission or the Board of Selectmen is, is that maybe we send this, we, we, we kind of get a consensus and, and a feeling from this group and send it to those boards as a referral? In addition to inviting them to the listening session. I'm just, I don't mean to overcomplicate it. I'm just thinking of ways to, like you, like kind of what you're hinting, let's make sure we don't go too far in one direction and find out that everyone wants us to go the other direction.
Right, right, right.
I, you know what, anecdotally, I, I think they're looking to us for guidance, but it can't hurt to ask and to reach out, but I'm just saying, I.
Yeah, because I'm thinking if we put a document out there, even if it's a draft, you know, prior to the meeting, um, is it gonna, is it gonna, are people going to think that's, that's, you know, the, 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 the final product?
I think telling people no, but.
And I'm wondering if we actually need to put the document out there for the listening session. I, I think we share it with, you know, uh, the, the Board of Selectmen and zoning, I mean, and zoning commission.
Unfortunately, with the current executive orders from the governor, if we have a meeting and the subject is the affordable housing plan and we have something, we have to upload that packet so the public can access it.
Okay.
So we're going to have to, we're going to have to share it with them at, at some point, whether it's the day of the meeting or prior to the meeting. The public will get to see this document.
Um, do we need to share it with them prior to the listening session?
Yes.
Why? We don't have anything ready to publish or?
We, we should.
We can label a draft.
Listen until we do.
Yeah.
I remember, remember when we were doing the P O C D? You know, we didn't go in with, hey, this is what we're thinking about. What do you guys think? We went in, what do you think?
But we had a draft.
No, no, not that we showed anybody.
No, the, I think, I think the difference is, is that the P O C D, we weren't, we were in the rough stages of drafting some of the chapters. We really didn't have chap, chapters ready, unlike where we are with this plan, where we have, we have something. We have a document, whether it's the final document, you know, this could change drastically from, um, based on the public input, et cetera. And I also think that if you have a document, um, especially in the sense of, of the subject of portable housing, you at least can, you at least have a, a starting point for the conversation versus a free fall in, and kind of what has been said earlier. The document has some education purposes in it highlighting, you know, what enabling statutes, uh, we're dealing with for, for the subject of affordable housing.
Um. Yeah, okay. That, that's fine. I was just trying to avoid an iteration. I was just trying to avoid an iteration.
Well, actually, we didn't have listening sessions, we had public hearings on the P O C D.
No, but there were also, remember all those workshops we had, Erin, you know, with people, people put the dots on the maps and all this stuff.
Yeah, but I wouldn't say, that was, that was orchestrated by Glenn as input, but when we actually went to the public hearing, we had a draft to give to them, that was
Yeah, 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 but that draft was a product of all the workshops.
Right, but I think when you have something as big as the P O C D, I mean, and I think Alan, if I remember correctly, was saying, listen, we go and give a draft and we do a listening session, because yeah, I, I mean, I see what you're saying, but we had, yeah.
No, yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, I think having a framework or a draft is probably the right thing, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to go in with a blank piece of paper and have people fire stuff at us.
And I think, Bill, at that point with the P O C D, just to me, I think we were saying, okay, how are we going to restructure, because we totally stripped that P O C D, right? And really started from scratch almost. And so it was like, what's important to people, what's important to us? And so I think we needed to have that, because that document was so huge.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I, I have a, um, an inkling that this subject of affordable housing and the, the product being an affordable housing plan is gonna strike a nerve with, um, you know, a certain percentage of the townspeople. Uh, and we have to make it look as, um, you know, objective and, uh, just, you know, just what we're doing, you know, I don't think, we, we may have certain, um, you know, even blind, what do you call it? You know, not a prejudice, but like a, like a bias, we might have biases that we don't even see.
Yeah.
You know? All right, well, um, yeah, Mike, so this is where I conclude. Um, we'll pick up with the, the rest of the document at the next meeting, September eighth. Um, I believe that's the date.
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, at that point, we'll decide if we're going to be prepared for a September twenty-second uh, listening session. You know, I, I'm not sure if I just like send a note to Eric and the rest of the selectmen and say, hey, you know, we're working on this affordable housing plan, are there any guiding principles that you want us to, to know about from, from the Board of Selectmen? Is that, is that a reasonable request? Hi, Dave, I thought you weren't going to be here tonight.
I wasn't, but I did come in late, and I stayed quiet, but I listened.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable, Bill.
Okay, um, yeah, what do you think, Mike? You, you look a little pensive.
No, 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 maybe, um, we, since we were talking Eric, maybe let's reach out to Eric again, respond to his emails, basically what you said.
Okay, just to him?
Just to him, because he's, yeah.
Okay, now, the, um, I want to avoid him taking over and influencing the process. Okay, uh, because I, I think he, he already kind of tipped his hat a little bit, okay?
Or, 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 Bill, here's an idea, is kind of what I said earlier about like a referral process, is that maybe I could prepare some correspondence that you can sign, and we can send to, as correspondence to the Board of Selectmen, basically stating what you said earlier. We're in the process of developing a affordable housing plan for the community, and we'd like to know guiding principles, anything that you feel that we need to really pay attention to as we develop this plan. Um, I know it's not giving them a plan, but it's, it's kind of, it's kind of soliciting some sort of feedback or direction.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we could do that, that I think works, and then they would, they would receive it at their next meeting in their packet, and they could discuss it, they could send a letter to you in response and say, here's our, we discussed it aboard, here's four or five things we would really like you to consider, or you can get nothing back.
Yeah, okay, yeah, why don't you do that, please?
Um, do they know what eight thirty G is? I mean, the, the, the one problem we have is we say, oh, give us your direction on a affordable housing plan, and if they don't know what eight thirty G is, they may tell us to do things that have, that are completely different than the eight thirty G.
So three members, three members of the Board of Selectmen formally serve on land use commissions, two on the planning commission, one served on the zoning commission. So they, three of them are familiar what eight thirty G is.
Okay.
So.
But Holly, to your point, if they did give recommendations that we weren't able to abide by, I think we can explain that, do you know what I mean, and because they would then be able to be at that listening session to say, you know, so I agree with you, but I, I think if they did come back with things we couldn't incorporate, we could certainly send a correspondence back to say, we appreciate your input, but given this, you know what I mean? To, yeah.
We've got a big task ahead of us in defining the goals, because currently, you know, our draft states goals that go beyond eight thirty G anyway.
And Mike, would it be appropriate to include a sentence that references thirty G in the letter? Um, just, just to sort of make sure they're thinking about it when they're responding.
Yeah, we could do that, we could do that.
Only if it makes sense, I'm just
Well, I mean, I definitely will include a sentence about that, you know, the plan is being developed pursuant to eight thirty J of the statutes.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So, and, and maybe the language of the public act that requires that this plan be developed and maintained once every five years by the community.
Okay.
Okay. So I think we should, um, end the discussion on the workshop at this point. Um, Mike, any correspondence that's come in since the agenda has been posted?
Nothing new, Dad.
Nothing new, okay. I drove up, um, on Murphy's Way last week, and I have no objection to that road being accepted. It's too bad the development hasn't really, you know, been fulfilled, but the road looks good.
Yep, yeah, well, you have, you have two house lots left up there.
Yeah.
So, because that was a five-lot subdivision.
Yep.
So hopefully with all the houses on that road, now that it's a public road, maybe we'll have interest, we'll get two new homeowners in town.
Yep. Okay, commissioners, any other, Sean?
Uh, I actually, uh, this is my last meeting with you all. Um, I, it's been a nice, long, fun one, but I submitted my resignation letter this morning. Uh, I am going to school for my master's in teaching, and my teacher certificate, and my classes fall exactly during these times. Uh, and I'm also going to be moving out of Simsbury in the near future, so for reasons, I will be leaving you all, but I've learned such a great deal in the little time I've been with you all, and like have a whole new respect for town government and the way things run, it's amazing. After my first meeting, I went to my friends, and I said it was the most boring fun I've ever had, but that's exactly, I really appreciate all the work that everyone's doing. Um, so, yeah, I'll be, I've let the Democratic Town Committee know that I'm heading out, and so I think they'll be trying to find someone to fill in my position, if that's the way things run. Um, but otherwise, it's been a lot of fun, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's been, been nice having you on the commission.
Good luck.
Good luck with the next phase, yeah.
Yep, same to you all.
We'll miss you.
I'll be keeping up with what you're doing. I'm curious how to, how this all turns out, so.
Okay.
But you can't come to the listening session.
Right? That's, I'm, I'll have to listen in, maybe, we'll see.
Yeah, she might be a regular member of the public.
Yeah, there you go.
Would we have to recuse ourselves, though, because she was on the board?
No, 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 she's not, she won't. Now she knows where the, you know, where the bodies are buried, she can really, you know, take us to pass.
Like a spy or something. That's all good.
Any other comments, folks, anybody? All right, good session tonight. Yeah, uh, I think we'll be able to knock it off next time, and, uh, and I just, I'm sure it's going to be a good product based on the amount of effort we're putting into this.
I think so, too. Just like the P O C D.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, so that was Erin.
Second.
Yeah, okay, Erin moved to adjourn. Rich seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, six to zero, zero. Thanks, everybody.